Call a meeting to order. Please rise to declare your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible, to a liberty and justice for all.
While everybody's still standing, I'd like a moment of silence for Bill Leibler. He was a graduate of our school and he was a teacher here for many years. And he was the electrical inspector for Hanover. And I knew Bill personally for a long time. So if we could have a moment of silence. Tonight there will be a vote to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining for Unit A and to consider the purchase exchange risk of value of real estate of a 436 Webster Street because doing so in public session could negatively impact the bargaining position of the school committee. Following the executive session, we will return to open session to continue with the rest of the agenda. There is no agenda adjustments tonight. And this meeting is being videotaped. Public hearing on the fiscal year 23 budget. I'd ask for a motion to suspend the regular meeting and open the public hearing on the fiscal year 23 budget and waive the reading of the public hearing notice.
Motion.
Rockland, second by Whitman. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The unanimous motion carries. Would anyone care to comment on the fiscal year 23 budget proposal? Sir?
Tom, I know you've answered this for me in the past. Jesse McSwenney, advisor for Norwell. The per pupil assessment, I probably have asked you twice now in three years. I should write it down. Could you just explain that?
Yes. Thank you. So again, members of the committee, Jesse is the chair of Norwell's advisory committee.
And I'm joined by Liz Ever.
Hi Liz, thanks for coming.
I might have asked him that question in the back of the room, which is why you're getting it.
But I'll take it. It's a no word.
Before you get your answer, I'm the Norwell rep for Norwell. I think I've met you before.
Yes.
Young lady. This is only the third time in my tenure that someone from Norwell showed up for a budget hearing.
We're happy to be here.
Thanks, thanks for coming.
Welcome.
About 70 percent of the assessments for our towns stems from the minimum local contribution, the chapter 70 formula. The other 30 percent is divided up through apportionment from our regional agreement, which is based on a rolling average. So per pupil costs absolutely matter when it comes to things like debt and capital and any operating costs that go above the state's foundation budget. So that's, that part of the assessment, as you look at the breakdown for each town and you look at the amount for costs above the minimum or capital or debt, it has a direct connection to enrollment. The per pupil, the per pupil calculations we do at the end of the process to try to give an across-the-board comparison. Oftentimes our towns are interested in seeing how the different towns shake out in terms of per pupil costs. The biggest driver is a town's ability to pay and the chapter 70 formula. So when I would join Bob at Norwell Advisory in the last 10 years or so, it's oftentimes, it would oftentimes come up as an obvious point of comparison that per pupil costs from Norwell or Situit or Hanover are more than they would be from Whitman or Hanson or Rockland or Abington.
I'm remembering this conversation now because the poll question I asked is, everybody from last year, I believe. It's the what a town can, quote-unquote, can afford versus a per pupil.
Prior to 1993, the answer would have been as simple as the number of kids in the numerator from your town and the denominator would be the total number of kids.
Because there's a local town that's bought that, you and I, that's exactly what we talked about.
Exactly.
Dear and dear to my heart.
That's right. And so what we have is, we do have a sliding scale and it, and it's an attempt at equity where they have a formula based on collective, the income in a community and the real estate values. So that, so when we're able to come, you know, later this winter to talk with advisory, all advisories, we do point, we do want to point that out and also to point out that the majority of the assessments are driven by, certainly enrollment is a factor, but that's why three and a half hours ago, as we, as we say every January jokingly, we set this meeting late in January so that we can hit the refresh button, waiting for the governor's number to drop. Because with that piece of the puzzle, Jim has already calculated how to apportion the capital and the debt, et cetera. And that's where, and that's where we are, where we are actually today, just a few hours old. But that's essentially the answer. It's, it's based on that formula.
Yeah. If, if I, I will, I will hopefully not have to ask that question again in front of the board.
No, it bears, it bears real.
If you, if you bring it up, then you've already beat me to it because someone on my board will ask that.
Appropriately so. If somebody thinks that it should be equal across the board and it's not, I'd ask that question too.
Yeah.
Where's the coupon and why didn't I get it? So it definitely deserves to be asked again and answered again. Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, one, just a follow-up.
Norwell does have an increase in students.
I saw, I saw the, yeah, of six. And I assume that number is taken day one of school versus fiscal hasn't, that number is.
We use, we use the October 1, all public schools, we use the October 1 enrollment.
Okay.
The last two pages of the campus that I hand out is directly from the Jesse website that was printed this afternoon at, you know, 3:30, which pretty much, Jesse gives us the minimum contributions from each town. So again, that's what Tom is referring to about the town's ability to pay with the minimum contribution. And that's, that's the number the state gives us, which is 60 percent of our budget and everything else, as Tom mentioned, falls down based upon those. And we have little control over that and the minimum contribution. And then the last page is just a comparison of where the minimum contributions were last year compared to this year. So again, all out of our control.
Yes.
But that's the basis of what, the foundation of what each town is carrying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular meeting agenda.
Motion.
Second by, motion by Rockland, second by Whitman. Any discussion on the matter? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. In unanimous. Okay, now we'll go back to our regular meeting agenda. Any comments from the public tonight? Seeing none? I'd ask for a motion to approve the set of minutes in both senior quarters. Situit, second by Coacet. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Student Advisory Committee, Grace.
Hello.
Hi, Ryan.
I'm Grace, you already know that though. I only have a few things. And I'll start off with skills. They're participating in the MRE challenge at the National Guard Armory on Friday, January 28th, this Friday. The three students competing are, I'm going to butcher these names, but Katali Mello, Stella Glycus, and Matty Hewlett. They have the Senior Sale Conference at Gillette on February 10th, which I'm also attending. Skills USA District Competition is on March 4th. It will be at the school. Their Comedy Night fundraiser is March 12th at the Venus Two in Hanson. We have.
The Venus Two?
The Venus Two in Hanson. There's 126 competing in districts this year. Student Council, we have a few things that we're working on. One thing is Polar Plunge. We're still trying to get that, to, trying to make it happen. Right now, we're talking to Hope to hopefully finally find a beach. Valentine's Day, we're doing a Valentine's fundraiser. It's, we're selling chocolates and like teddy bear keychains for $2. We have a CMAAS conference at Brooklyn High School on February 17th. It's going to be 4 to 8:30. And I will actually be attending a student representative orientation in Marlboro on Sunday, run by MASK. Lastly, I want to talk about GSA, the Gay-Straight Alliance here. We have a lot going on. We're working on, working with the Massachusetts Safe Schools members, including Jeff Perotti, sorry, and Landon Callahan, in helping coach students and train some staff members. Our GSA members are hoping to do a short staff training, which me and another student are working on right now, to bring awareness to specific issues that are revolving in our school right now. Members have been and will continue to attend the state regional GSA meetings virtually for the, for the time being. Ms. Baldner has been very kind enough to help us arrange this and get us lunch, so that way we have our own space. We actually hosted a movie night too on Friday. We watched the Disney movie Luca. And then we also had a guest speaker, let me find their name. I forget their name, but they were a teacher here a few years ago. I forget, 2013, I think?
Jen DiMariani.
Jen DiMariani. And she's an openly gay member of the community and she just talked to her about, she talked to us about her life experiences and it was definitely very helpful, I think, to everyone. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Grace. Thank you. Well, we're, treasurer's report, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, we have the December treasurer's report. Again, this past month, we collected the two remaining outstanding assessments from our member towns. We collected about $706,000 from Hanson and Whitman. They just passed a deadline, but they closed the books on November 12th. So everything, everybody's paid up their assessments for the first two billings. We have a little bit of income coming in. We also have our chapter 78, $371,000, which is, you know, coming in every month. Overall, a lot of million dollars of revenue that came into the books. Page three, pretty much expenditures. This December was a free payroll cycle, so payroll a little over a million dollars, which is normally six, $700,000. So we had the, we had a third paycheck that kicked in in December. So other than that, everything else is on target. No major issues, no major disruptions in the business office. Kenny's doing a fabulous job. Right now, she's pulling payroll, trying to issue 1099 for all of our vendors. It's been a fun week. And now Pam Curtis has settled in as our head office person. Pam's doing a fabulous job maintaining all of the payroll and getting her customers. Overall, we're running schools, so I think this is it. And actually, I skipped the first page, which was our cash position. So overall, between all of our savings and stabilization funds and so forth, it happens to be printed on double-sided paper.
Yeah.
Seven point three million dollars in our savings accounts and our OPEB balance right now is $842,000. Again, strong financials.
Good. Motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Oui.
Abington, second by Situit. Any discussion on the treasurer's report? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? In unanimous, motion carries. Warrants. You're on, you changed it. I did.
Actually, the heads up.
Well, forget here on time.
At least I make.
Yep.
Warrants, warrants 12, 12-1, 12.1, 12-A, 12-B, 13 and 13-A, 14 and 14.1, totaling $1,607,288.21.
Second. Okay, Situit. Any discussion on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In unanimous. Motion carries. Budget transfers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one budget transfer this month for license renewals. Again, as we've moved to remote, we've also bought more licenses to remote items and licenses for software and so forth. So we have a lot of $20,000 deficit in that account, so we're asking to transfer money from our utilities account. We seem to have some savings right now, so.
Okay. Motion by Hanson, seconded by Abington. Any discussion on the budget transfers? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Anything else, Jim?
Nope, I think that's it.
Very good. Nothing from the chairman tonight? Subcommittee? There are no subcommittee reports tonight? And that brings us to Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Jim Coughlin for, again, putting some preliminary assessment numbers together. The process works insofar as the, at our next meeting, which will be at our regular time in February, this is where we schedule a certification vote. If there are any adjustments to these preliminary numbers, they would be brought to the committee prior to that February meeting. And we certify a budget in February so that we meet the obligations of having a certified budget prior to our town meetings, which historically are scheduled in, a few of our towns, Situit, on a regular basis, and at times, Abington, are scheduled in April. Assessments can adjust after certification, but they can only go down. So we're following our typical process, waiting for the governor's numbers tonight, putting on an initial preliminary estimate. If we have any refinements to make, we'll bring them back to you. In the meantime, I wanted to let the committee know that we're scheduled to talk to Abington's finance committee on February 2nd and Situit's advisory committee on February 24th and Whitman's finance committee on March 22nd. Each town is on a slightly different pacing and we generally will get some communication in between now and the start of spring town meetings. We generally will have an opportunity to communicate with your respective advisory boards or finance committees. If I have not heard from them, as we get a little bit deeper into February, I'll reach out and see what their, what their schedules look like and then, and then get back to you. Otherwise, I, I just wanted to mention, just beyond the budget update, that we've had some good, we've had some good turnout when it comes to families and staff interested in participating in the rapid test program, the initiative you've seen in the news recently. So families have another day to sign up. We've had, we have over 180 families as of now who have signed up and about 100 of our staff as well. So I'll keep you updated on how, on how that is going when we get back together in February. Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'll turn it over to Mark and Sandy for their updates and also an introduction as well.
Very good.
Good evening. Well, Tom just took my first topic, so I'm going to move ahead to my second. So I'm here tonight to introduce the members of our HVAC department, that's Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning and Refrigeration. Putting together a vocational program team is kind of like building a, a Major League Baseball roster. You have that wily veteran who's been there a while, who knows the system, been around. That's Mr. Sean Malkern there on the end. You go out and you buy that really strong free agent guy. That is Mr. Russ Esau on this side over there. And then, of course, you've got to bring him up from the ranks, so that's the young man in the middle, Greg Boudreau. They have come together, they're doing a great job, relooking at the curriculum, redistributing some things, rechanging the order of events and, and bringing some stuff in. So I'm going to ask them all to come up here and just say a couple of words about who they are, where they're from, and that kind of stuff. So if you three gentlemen could come on, please? I warned them, so they should be prepared.
It could be an hour.
Yeah, well, I don't know about that, so.
Go right ahead. Not to worry, bro.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to stand before you and to tell you a little bit about the HVAC program. I started here 15 years ago. I never really planned on being a teacher. I think teaching chose me rather than me choosing it. And it was a direct result of having, being one of the district, living in a district town, that my son came here as a freshman. And one of the things that intrigued me about this school was how it helped my son change and how his life became better. And then, when I heard there was an opportunity for a job here, I said, well, I know I can teach people. I've done it at, at my job. And I thought, well, maybe I can do it here. And I had a very good vocational teacher as a kid myself. And for the rest of my life, the things that that man taught me made my life better. And so that was my desire when I came here, to help people, to change what I had walked into, into a better place. And I think we've come a long way. And now, we're almost seeing the complete picture that I dreamed of when I came here 15 years ago. We, after quite an exhaustive candidate search, have found a group that we've put together that now is on board and working together towards a common goal of serving our students and creating the best department we can have. And I can say that, as Mark said, building a team, these guys are my number one draft picks. Okay? We, we got good, we have good people here. Okay? And I can tell you in six, well, well, not six months, but in the half of the school year, the amount of progress that we have made, taking our shop from 15 years ago being a place people were put, to becoming a place where people fight to get in. And that's where I wanted to be and that's where we're at today. And a lot of that is due to the new influx of these two gentlemen. All the skills Mr. Esau brings, having already been a teacher and actually has administrative skills as well. And Mr. Boudreau, bringing in the plumbing component and having a new enthusiasm that we've not seen here in recent years. So I can tell the committee and all the members here and all the guests that we're in a good place, the best place we've ever been. And it's due to everybody's commitment to us, to the department, to the students of this school. This school is unlike anything else you will find. And it's a privilege and honor to be here, to work here and have the opportunity to work with the students. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Russell Esau and he can tell you a little bit about himself.
How are you doing? Thank you. Good night. Good to see everyone. Glad you came out. If told a little bit about me, I've spent my entire life in the town of Abington for 49 years. I love that town and I love the area community. My daughter lives in Norwell. I have family all in the towns that, that go into here. And my son, Chris, is a graduate of the CIT program here. About, oh, I'd say 15 years ago, I started being a teacher and there was nothing available here then. I got a job, I started in Taunton, but I ended up in Leominster, Mass. In case you don't know exactly, from Abington to Leominster is an hour and a half each way.
Yeah.
Yep. So for 12, for, for 10 years, I taught in their HVAC program. I, every day, it was about a three-hour drive, round trip. I then had gone through, got all my degrees and all that, and I actually became, I was asked, and I was the assistant principal there for the last two years. Mr. Hickey came out to a conference I was at and he knows me from, and he looked at me and he said, you know what? We're looking for an HVAC person. Would you think about it? And he planted that seed. And I went home, I talked to my wife, I said, you know what? On the thing here, it's 11 minutes. Okay? Now, I, I did well in Leominster and I, and I really enjoyed the city, but I still never felt like I was part of the city. You know, even when I went to the school committee meetings and all the stuff I had to do and the sports and everything. But day one, when I walked into this building, I almost felt like it hugged me. I feel at home. I really feel at home with all the people here. I know from education how to build a program. I know it from both sides. I know it fiscally. I figure out, we're going to get this many students, my project's is this, can I cut it down? Let's go with this much copper and so forth. I think of it on that. I walk into that shop and some of the administrators might say, they probably saw it change. And the good thing is that Mr. Malkern, he didn't stop me. You know, we never had any, we would sit the three of us every day and say, here's our vision, here's our goal. I don't like that. That's not safe. We had this horrible wall. I tore that wall down. I felt like Reagan, tear that wall down. I took it and, and I'm creating a plan and a program that I know works. When they were asking me in my interview where I wanted to fit in, I said freshmen and sophomores. Freshmen are the most important group that comes into a school. They're the ones that you sell your program to. I didn't get my final numbers, but I do know that we got basically number ones in our shop, which is very important. All our students want to be there, they want to work. That's what we look for. That's what we strive for. We've been successful in our trades and we, those students know that when I say to them, you follow me and you're going to be successful. And the other thing is, I don't believe in failure. And the good thing about a vocational education is I have four years. If they're not just getting it now, hold on, you're going to start figuring out. And they just, I just have them do it over again, that you could do better. And we get to that point where it's about mastery and learning a skill. I don't allow them and I don't believe in stress. I said, relax, don't stress. Students today have a lot of stress. We have a lot of tests that you have to take, DM cast and stuff like, oh my goodness, what happens to? I don't allow that. I said, listen, we don't all do our best each day. I'll strap that one, we'll go on. And our whole vision and our whole goal in our shop is to allow each student to be the best they can and not let them drop out. And basically, I want to thank you for having me here and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Boudreau. And we're able to now add that plumbing part to our shop because there is a connection with boilers and other things. And when our students get out, they might choose like, hey, maybe I want to be a plumber or maybe I want this. They won't get the credits, but most of the shops now, the way it works in plumbing is they have a tier section and they'll, if you're a plumbing shop, you still have to go to school. And they'll say, but this person already knows how to solder, already knows how to do this, understands the closet system. And so we're offering them that ability. So we believe our shop offers them the best opportunity we can for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good evening, everybody. My name is Greg Boudreau. I am brand-new to teaching, I'm brand-new to the school. I am coming from 30 years in industry. Some of that working for someone else. I worked for myself for about 12 years. The last two years, I'm coming from Local 12 in Boston where I was a service plumber for a, for a company out of Boston. So my hope is, to this program, I'm bringing a wide range of industry experience. Obviously, I don't have the teaching experience, but with these two gentlemen here with me, they are great mentors. So I'm hoping that my, my skill set can help these students, set them up a little better, give them that little bit of a plumbing component. Like Mr. Esau said, there's a lot of crossover between the trades and the hope is to give these students maybe that, just that little extra edge when they go out into the workforce. When they go, eh, yeah, we got a little piece of plumbing, so maybe we'll pluck this kid before we pluck someone else. So that's a, that's my hope coming into this program, that I can, that's something I can help add to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll be bringing you a different department each month. It's going to be tough, tough to follow these three, they've done a fabulous job. I do want to pick up on something that Greg said. We do this in a number of shops.
I do wanna pick up on something that Greg said, we do this in a number of shops, Mr. Hickey has been great about adding that component, we do it in automotive, where our automotive students are also getting, uh, collision repair technology skills, it just makes them more employable, in this shop, the HVAC students are also getting plumbing skills. Just as Mr. Boudreau said, they're just that much better than the next kid, and that's really what we want, we want that kid to be employable when they walk out of here, and the more skills we give them in a program, the more employable they are. Thank you, I'm gonna turn it over to Sandy.
For building items.
Thank you, HVAC, you are singing my song, uh, they might have even brought a tear to my eye, um, in, in very different ways, but, uh, I'm thrilled to have this team, and grateful to have them, uh, share their, a little bit of their story with, with us tonight, so thank you very much, gentlemen. My presentation is short and sweet tonight, uh, the first is that semester one is in the books, we have made it through our first semester of two thousand and twenty-two, um, report cards have been, uh, slightly reformatted for the convenience of students and parents, and one highlight is that students and parents can, uh, have opportunity to sign off once they've read that report card, so we can be sure that our message is being received by our intended audience, so that is good news, um, like a red receipt on an email. Compliments are the second piece of my report, and that's to, um, the ELA department, specifically Ally Provost, to, to some excellent work on an equity audit, where they took a look at their curriculum and identified areas of strengths and weakness in terms of the type of, and the type of literature that they're bringing through, uh, the content of the literature, the voice of the literature, and the author of the literature, and then identified gaps for different subgroups, uh, across, um, different subgroups, and, uh, they did, she did a beautiful job with that, and there was some great discussion on ELA about what different texts they can use to supplement, um, and infuse their curriculum for next year, so you'll see some books coming your way for your review in the coming months, so a nice job there. Planning for twenty-twenty-three is in a full swing, um, and next year, you will see the math department put together a new course in statistics, so that is exciting, Pam Walsh is spearheading that, um, working with some mentor teachers in that. And finally, semester two, uh, another nod to almost-normalcy, uh, we are bringing back our Credit for Life Fair, uh, this spring, it'll be a hybrid version, so, uh, like many other things, um, students will have an opportunity to participate in, uh, in a really well-done online, uh, Credit for Life platform developed by the South Shore Banking Consortium, and then they will have a, a real-life component with a series, uh, with a handful of, of volunteer vendors, uh, with whom they will practice their, um, their adult dialogue, their ability to, to speak to adults about adult, adult topics, um, in an adult way, so we're looking forward to them having that opportunity to have some, to, to, to mix and mingle, and to learn something new. And that is it.
What is the date of that, President Walsh?
Oh, the, it's, it, it is either the fifth, sixth, or seventh of April, I will let you know, I just need to get a confirmation from, uh, the bankers. Love to have you there, I'll definitely let you all know. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Got it? Okay. New business surplus request, we have a mix here, and a flat-top range that is gonna be surplus. Can I have a motion from Situit?
I'll second it.
Whitman? Any discussion on the surplus items? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anyone opposed?
Talking about surplus, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, thank you for the committee from, uh, being able to reach out to Rockland, the senior senate, see about taking the, the old, take re-displaced, and that, unfortunately, they had no use for them, but appreciated the offer.
Yes, well, that's what it's about. Re, has there, anyone have a request for action? Saying none, I need a motion to go into executive session. Abington, followed by, no, uh, Hanson. He works in Norwell, he lives in here. All right, any discussion on the, the motion to go into executive session? All those in favor?
No.
Roll call?
Yes.
Okay, Abington?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, yes, okay.
You need to explain what we're going into executive session for.
He, he did at the beginning, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, yeah.
I need all the help, Walsh, believe me.
Sorry.
No, no, I, I'm off work.
You wanna borrow one, man?
Yeah.
Maybe, eh?
Okay, motion carries.
Shot across the...
We are now in executive session. Okay, we're now back in open session, I will ask for a motion to approve a twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-four unit-day MOA, which includes a revised salary scale, annual increases of two-point-two-five, two-point-five, and two-point-five, and a step freeze in year two. I need a motion. Hanson?
Second.
Seconded by Abington, is there any discussion on that matter? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to retain legal counsel.
Hang on one minute, Bob.
Sure.
I think the subcommittee should make the motion.
Yeah, you make, yeah, you make a motion to recommend it, and then...
Yeah, okay, well, we have a mole to do it. Go ahead, Bob, you make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll, and I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, you can change it. Sorry about that. Just to cover.
Yep. Family.
Just to cover, huh? Just to cover. I don't wanna be at the next family dinner with you.
No, it's okay.
He's still at the children's table.
Revoate it?
Yeah, we'll revoate it, but voice vote it, a voice vote is fine, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. We'll try number two, the next item on the agenda is to vote to retain a legal counsel for a potential real estate transaction regarding four-three-six Webster Street, in the town I hand over. The legal review subcommittee is recommending we retain the attorney, Sean Riley, can I get a motion on that matter?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Okay. Um, Norwell and Cohasset, all those in, or Whitman, excuse me, yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, because of friendship with the attorney.
Okay.
You have friends? Yep. I had a lot more before I took this job.
All right, I can't say that.
That's all right.
Okay. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn from open session.
Motion, with all due respect, to adjourn?
No.
Seconded by, yeah.
Oh, to adjourn, that's not a...
All those in favor?
I agree.
Anybody opposed, I'll shoot. State the outcome of the, and a motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.